It is six o'clock. I will call the September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of With County Board of Supervisors to order. Tonight, we have Travis Foster from the All Nations Church of God to provide the invocation. If you would please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
God by his. Dear Lord, my prayer comes out of James, chapter one tonight. If any of you lack wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you. Lord, I pray tonight for your wisdom for these board members. God, I pray for your grace, Holy Spirit. I pray that you dwell in this place and help the decisions that are being made tonight. Lord, Father, we thank you for your presence. We thank you for your guidance each and every day. We glorify them. We pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Travis, before you take off, if nobody objects, I'd like to use a little bit of my supervisor's time so he can get out of here. I appreciate Mr. Smith taking care of my retreat tie. And I decided to wear it tonight. Of course, you know, we got to retreat George with big game this weekend, but I don't reckon there's a person sitting up here that doesn't enjoy seeing our young people excel on a field or court and then do well in life. And when I seen Travis on the agenda, I had the pleasure, I'll still call you young man, I had the pleasure of watching him grow up and play sports and excel in sports. But he chose to remain in With County and give back to the community by mentoring the youth either on the field or in the church. And I just want to say thank you and, you know, Father of three boys, thank you for staying in With County and giving back.
Thank you.
And you believe now. All right. The first item on our agenda is citizens' time. We do not have any citizens signed up to speak, so we'll move on to payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Cook, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any invoice that any board member wants to pull out and or discuss? Right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vernon? So approved. Next item on our agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from September the tenth, two thousand and twenty four. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Vernon. Is there any questions or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Our next item is old business. Mr. Barrett, do you have anything on their old business?
I do not.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir, I do not.
Right, we'll move on to the reports from our constitutional officers. We have the treasurer, Ms. Gwynne. We've received a copy of her, excuse me, financial report in our package. Ms. Gwynne, how are you?
Good, well, how are you all tonight?
Good, man, good.
The temperature went down a little bit. Making me feel like I'm across the park a lot. Very short and sweet tonight. Really, I'll have to read the treasurer's report as you head back to the chairman vault. And as you will see on the report, the total funds on hand for the county is seventy-seven million, nine hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars as of August thirty-first. Included in that amount is the general fund total of forty-two million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand and thirty-four dollars. Nothing major reported on the financial side unless you have any questions on anything. I'm sure the question that I sent Mr. Cook is wanting to ask about taxes that are coming up. As I'm here speaking now, I'm running what we call the generated AR report in the train environment of our tax system. And Mr. Catherine has been working today to rectify some other hiccups that we encountered in trying to get the tax book and my AR report to match. So he's worked on that today with me and has called me late this afternoon, and everything seems to be rectified. So I'm running my side of that to make sure it matches before we proceed to live. That way, we don't have a lot of bad data in live that we can fix the information and train before we get to that point. So real estate is in progress. Personal property is as well. It's sort of the same point of the book generating out of Mr. Linkus's office as well, from my side generating the IR. So once we do that, that puts the bills on the system, and we can begin more of the actual work of trying to get the bills out. So putting it in perspective going forward, going to guess at this point, and I feel like this is probably the safest guess. I don't know if it would be any earlier than this. If it is, it's going to be just by a few days, but it's probably going to be pushing the end of October before tax bills will be out. And that's just based on where we're at, the work that has to be done. And then by the time we send the file out to the printers and allow them for that to process through, let the bills get back into the county. So a lot of times, that can take about a week and a half to two weeks. It can really vary on that print time. They push it through as quickly as they pan for me, just because they know the past few years that we're really behind or were a little behind, somewhere in that range. So right now, again, just a guess, I'm guessing the end of October for this to go out. And that would be real estate and personal property, but. Any questions on anything of where we're at in the process? We've been working through a lot of things.
How did you do on the sale?
Sale went very well. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Sorry, I forgot to mention that. Sale went very well. We had two parcels that were actually redeemed prior to the auction taking place. So those property owners were able to keep their properties. We did sell the other thirteen, and all properties brought enough funds to pay off all the taxes that are owed us. So we're collecting, I think around ninety-six thousand was the amount of tax that was due to us for tax penalty and interest over all the years for those parcels. Of course, a lot of those funds will pay off judgments that were against those parcels and things like that. So any remaining money beyond paying the taxes, any judgments, things like that against the property, we call that excess funds. Those funds get transferred to the circuit court, and certain courts retain those for two years. The property owner can petition the circuit court to receive their portion of those excess proceeds. So if they're the only owner of the property, they're entitled all. If they're an heir of the property, if they're one of fifteen or twenty or thirty heirs, whichever the situation may be, they can claim their portion. If after the two years, and the owner or owner's heirs, however you want classified, have not claimed their portion of the proceeds, those funds are transferred back to the county when it goes into our general fund. So sometimes we have gotten money back of a significant amount, if that's how you want to look at it. Sometimes we haven't, but you know, you definitely want those folks to try to claim that if they can. And it ends up being an interesting situation if there's multiple heirs involved, which is a lot of the properties that we sold because they were locked in a state. They were the deceased parents, very parents, very persons, so you have a lot of heirs. So that helps. I guess in essence, you can say clear family situations, because a lot of times that's what they're doing.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any more questions for Ms. Gwynne? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Going back to where it's warmer and check on my taxes.
Thank you.
All right. And we have the commissioner, and I believe Mr. Linkus and his staff are attending the annual commissioner's conference, and Sheriff Foster is attending the sheriff conference. So that kind of knocks it down to nine. Right, we'll move into new business. First item we have is Consent Calendar. We've all received a copy of that. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions and or discussion about the consent calendar? Right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is so approved. Next, we have our second quarter appropriations for FY twenty five. This year's flying by. I'll entertain a motion to approve the second quarter appropriations. Have a motion by Mr. Morgan. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Vernon? Mr. Barrett, do you have anything to add on that?
No, sir.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Terry. So approved. Next, we have the Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission rail grant. Mr. Barrett, I believe this is you.
I'll speak, because I'll probably speak a little more blunt about it. If you don't notice, this agreement says the twelfth day of May, two thousand and twenty-two. We got an email back in two thousand and twenty-two from the JIDA indicated they'd gone to the tobacco commission meeting and that we had gotten our rail grant. Mr. Hankins has been working diligently to try to get all the paperwork to go with it. And about a week ago, we got contacted by the JIDA. They were trying to find the paperwork, and we said, we've never gotten any paperwork from you. So they sent this to us end of last week. So this is a grant from two years ago. So I would request that you all approve this grant agreement. We will update the date to the current date, but we can go ahead and get that in.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission rail grant.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second. Have a second by Mr. Vernon. Are there any questions or discussion on that? Yeah, when you're talking about the date being two years old, is this, you're just copying from the old one, or is this one that we missed two years ago?
No, no, this was the grant agreement that was provided to the JIDA.
That we.
That they never provided to us to approve. So we are, this will be agreed to as of the current date, but it is a grant that has already been awarded to With County. And I don't know if you got anything to add, Mr. Hankins?
We can turn right around and submit for the grant proceeds because we've done the work.
Okay.
So the JIDA, they were the holder?
Yes. I don't know if it just got lost in their paperwork or what happened in it, but Ms. Collins, myself, Matt, we all went through everything we had trying to find a copy of the executed agreement. We couldn't find the executed agreement, couldn't even find the non-executed agreement that ever been sent to us in the process. I asked Matt if he had seen the agreement. He had not seen the agreement.
I remember the award.
Yeah.
But I don't remember any action on it.
So the work's been done almost two years, and we haven't received any funding for that, right?
Yeah.
But we haven't received any funding, correct?
Correct. The funding that we initially received was through the Department of Rail and Public Transportation. We've submitted for that and received that from the state. So we're in the performance period now. We will enter the performance period as soon as we all approve this one, and we'll submit the reimbursement as quickly as we can.
So I think that's something we need to pick up with David and his group.
It was at tobacco. Was that one that you can continue to apply for over and over again?
This was an individual grant just for funding for this. But yes, it is open to apply for grants for different industrial projects.
What I'm getting at is we waited for two years. We couldn't have got this one, then turned around and got another one.
This didn't hold up anything else from any other application or anything else that we're aware of.
And you have to pay for it in a motion.
Okay.
And apparently they volunteered. While we're getting this, we didn't miss any money. All right. I believe we have a motion to second on the floor. Is there any more questions or discussion? Right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Vernon? So approved. Next item on our agenda is we have a poll book grant that I believe Mr. Counts has received.
Yeah, so it's not very often that the state gives us money for election-related items. But if you all recall, back during budget time, I had just mentioned that our current poll book vendor is only providing service to us through November thirtieth of this year. They still haven't indicated yet what's going to happen. They're kind of in the swab with their parent company, and who balls is going to take over. So we're good to go through this November election. But back over the summertime, the state rolled out a grant program for localities still utilizing paper poll books, and it was an excessive amount of money. And so there was only a certain amount of localities that could apply. After that, they opened it up to everybody else that's still under this, that has the same vendor that we use for our poll books. And so we were awarded this grant of fifty-three thousand dollars. Once we execute a purchase order, the state will then reimburse us. So that it's a hundred percent for the full amount of the program and all of the new equipment and everything. So what I'm just requesting is for the frontal cost of the fifty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
So moved. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry.
Mr. Chairman, will that motion also include amends and appropriate those funds?
Yes, thank you. Does that change your second?
Yes.
All right. Is there any questions or discussion on that? I've got a couple of things, Mr. Barrett. Did we budget any money for that in this year's budget?
No.
No, we were gonna, we were gonna wait and see what happened after November, and then I was gonna come back and.
And the reason I ask is because I know Mr. Counts had talked about the cages back during budget season, and that was, that was one thing because we knew we were going to have to change. So I don't know if that's something that we need to look at this year or next year, since we did get the grant, and the brunt of the cost is not on the county, maybe we could go forward and look at purchasing those.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's all. Anybody else have anything? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry? So approved. Thank you, Mr. Counts.
And while I'm up here, I will give you all an update on early voting. So far, our numbers are for the first three days are higher than they were in two thousand and twenty. We've had over four hundred come in. So we had one hundred and eighty-eight on the first day, one hundred and sixty-two yesterday, and all over a hundred a day. So things are going along pretty good. Haven't gotten any complaints. I've been impressed that people have been able to find us.
Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned that. And I failed to mention it when you were up here, but just so everybody knows, and I know we've pushed it out on social media, and anybody's watching this on YouTube, early voting has started.
That's correct.
We have moved the registrar's office to four forty West Franklin Street, which is right across the road, and there's parking.
That's right.
It's not on Fourth Street, so you don't have to parallel park or circle the block until somebody leaves.
That's right.
We've got a parking lot. It's accessible, handicap accessible. It's a really nice building in and out. And how long do you think it takes now?
I would say be in and out of there in four or five minutes.
Yeah, so nobody has an excuse not to get out and vote anymore. But it's an extremely nice building.
Like I said, everything's functioning good. The flow, everybody coming in. So I would anticipate possibly by the end of this, we could probably be seeing four to five hundred people a day, I guess, for at this point.
So if you're at four forty now, I'm shooting in a month to double that, at least.
I'm sure it will be, like I said, in two thousand and twenty, we had over four thousand. So I'm sure this time we'll break that now. I was, I didn't really think we would, but at this rate, I'm kind of pretty sure we'll have. Unless everyone's just coming in the first week, and then it'll dial, but I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Counts, I think told me one hundred and eighty the first day, and four years ago, it was ninety. So it's about twice the amount on the first day.
Yeah, on the first day, so.
Well, if that's four thousand, and that holds true, then that's eight thousand.
And if you're old and debating on it, you know, you can go vote now and die tomorrow, and your vote still counts.
It's a good point.
So that's, that's, that's a good way.
I don't know if I'd go with that old thing. I think it'd probably benefit everybody sitting up here. I think it'd probably benefit all of us sitting up here to just go ahead and get that locked in for November.
All right. Any other questions?
Anybody else have any?
Just thinking. How about them dudes?
I know, that was a.
You were the first person I thought of when I seen that pop up on the scoreboard.
I couldn't believe it myself. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda, we've got a Gov. Deals Auction. I'll turn it over to Colonel Martha Collins, our auctioneer. Absolutely. Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve, or I guess a motion to declare a surplus and accept the bids received.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And thank you, Ms. Collins, again, for your work on that. We'll move on to staff reports. Deputy County Administrator, Mr. Hankins, and we need good news only tonight.
That's my report, Mr. Chairman. We have put out a bid for a replacement of fire station doors and one EMS station door. We did get bids back for those. The apparently bidder is Premier Building Solutions. We would like your authorization to negotiate on one point, but to enter into an agreement to proceed in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents. We think we can bring that a little lower if we eliminate one item that we asked for. But the other two bids were right at one hundred and seventy-five thousand, so we're pretty close, and we're under budget from what we expected to be.
All right. You've heard the gentleman's request. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Vernon. Is there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, I'll start with you. So approved.
Thank you. Do want to call out our Next Gen nine-one-one. We've been working on this for a while. This is the new call handling equipment and new circuitry to connect our folks and connect callers who are coming in. It gives us some backup circuits that we've not had before, and it gives us the ability to transfer callers to other PSAPs in Virginia and beyond. It's a lot of new capacity that we haven't had before. Our staff is in training for it now, and the cutover is expected to be Thursday, the twenty-sixth. Twin County and Blaine County, who are also in our group, they've already cutover, experienced very few difficulties cutting over. Everything is working as it should in those other counties. So we're hopeful that their early experience informs ours and that we are able to cut over Thursday without any issues. But I just wanted to make you aware of that. You're aware that we have some new fire equipment. The fire parades are coming up. Saturday, October twelfth, is the Fire Prevention Parade here in Withel. If any of the board members would like to ride with the emergency services staff to go through the parade, you're welcome to. Just let us know, and we'll figure out the seating arrangements. So we'd appreciate you going along with us. And would like to call out.
Can we drive?
I don't know. Can you?
I know I can.
We'll have to see how many we've got interested in driving, Mr. Chairman. Do want to call out, occasionally, we have something major happen, and we don't have the capacity to handle it on our own. If you remember the lightning storm that we had back in late August, it knocked out five microwave dishes in our radio system on Sand Mountain. We took a pretty big hit that night. Our radio system kept working. There's enough redundancy. It didn't provide the same level of coverage, but all of our sheriff's deputies and other first responders were able to communicate back to central that night. I think I'm the only one that central couldn't hear, and I was standing on the interstate directing traffic around direct, but we were able to work through that using phones. But taking a hit to five microwaves at once is a big hit, and would certainly like to recognize a couple of folks who helped us out with that. Brian Dunkford and Derek Thompson have been outstanding when it comes to helping with our radio system. They were instrumental in helping to repair that damage, as was ProCom. So like to call those folks out when we have something good to say about them, and I can't say anything but good things in that circumstance. We were able to get the system back up and running functional the next morning. By lunchtime the next day, everything was working as it should. So we've ordered some extra equipment to make sure that if that happens again, we have it on site. ProCom just happened to have three that they were getting ready to install at another site that they were able to use on ours and replace. So that worked out well for everybody. So the resiliency that we have, I believe, is much better than we had with our old system, and I think the results show that. Did want to mention that the commercial realty proposals are due this Friday. We'll evaluate those and get back to you. If you've got anything that you'd like to have included in the capital improvement plan, as we're considering that, if you can email me and let me know. If you need to be re-familiarized with the old one, we've got it in last month's packet, but we certainly can send that out to you as well. The seating at the arena is very near completion. They're working through the punch list. They're supposed to be back this week to finalize everything. There were a lot of loose bolts and things that we found in going through the process, but the hockey team will be opening the season very soon. They're going to have their training camp next week, and they'll be opening with some preliminary action, I believe, October eleventh and twelfth. So that arena is starting to come back to life as an ice arena. The press box is done, the paving, we're hoping to have done. Stephen and I are looking to put Sowers Construction on permanent retainer, because every time they come here to do work, it rains. And so we think we can solve our precipitation issues by putting them on retainer. But we're going to meet with them Friday morning for a pre-construction meeting and get ready to do that paving. We hope it dries out quickly enough so that they can get the paving work done. We did bring in a third-party inspector just to check and make sure that it meets our standards as it gets put down. And then I believe to Ms. Lawson's happiness, the portage points are also very near being complete, so we're hopeful to have those operational before very long.
They look very nice.
I think we've got two very nice parks developing as a result of that.
All right. Does anybody have anything for Mr. Hankins? Matt, I just want to say I've got positive comments from Speedville Fire Department and Max Meadows about the additional trucks that we provided. And oddly enough, I haven't ran into anybody from Iowa though, so.
They were very appreciative when we.
I would assume we haven't heard anything negative, but Max Meadows was very appreciative with the truck that they received, and Speedville was as well. I think they were very anxious to get the insurance and tags and get the trucks once everybody knew they were here. So thank you for y'all's work on that, too.
We enjoyed delivering those vehicles when they come in, because we know what it means to those departments and, you know, the sort of service that they're going to get. So we're pretty happy with those. Like I said, I haven't, I was very appreciative of the delivery, and they're looking forward to what they can do with that truck.
Do you switch the gears a little bit? Do you have a dollar? Do you, uh, switch the gears a little bit, do you have a dollar amount, is how much has been lost at the break-ins from, at the lake?
Uh, the most recent one, um, we lost a chainsaw, so it would have been about two hundred seventy-five, um, three hundred dollars, um, was the value of the chainsaw, I believe that's all we lost there, uh, there was, uh, some damage to the door frame, so probably another fifty dollars in, uh, uh, labor and materials there. All told, this year I would say we're, we're probably close to two thousand dollars, uh, on four different, uh, break-ins, the, the first two were, were more significant than the, the two latest ones. Uh, we are looking at what we can do to, uh, upgrade our cameras, uh, out there so that we can, uh, get more reliable pictures of, uh, anybody who might.
Where are we on that?
Uh, we're getting pricing now.
And they have moved, they were moving some of the, uh, tools and everything to another location so that it would not be there anymore and they moved the tractor and stuff out.
As I said, if we've been broken four times, we need to just not leave anything there till we get it under camera.
Most of it has been moved to more secure storage.
It's under camera, but it's not clear enough, so we've got to make some other improvements.
Well, I mean, I, I think to, to Mr. Cook's point, and, and I know what camera we have out there, cameras we have out there, I, I think we need to look at the professional system. It's not something we can buy off Amazon.
We're, we're gonna have, uh, Daley, who, who did the cameras around the facility here, uh, kind of do, uh, POV, uh, so that we, we'd have that reliability.
All right, does anybody else have anything for Mr. Hankins? All right, we'll move on to county administrators' report, Mr. Barry.
Yeah, first thing, uh, I would request you all approve the change order that Mr. Kencer has presented in the amount of twenty-three thousand three twenty-four. Uh, most all of that is the railing that was required, um, to meet, uh, handicap accessibility standards.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the change order as presented.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Burnett, is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, uh, we have a request to set a public hearing for October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four for the proposed one million four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar rural development loan for the fire trucks which was purchased.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry, is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Mr. Chairman, everything else is just information unless there's any questions.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Barry? All right, we'll move on to County Attorney, Mr. Farthing, do you have anything? Moving on to board reports, I believe the first one is the Water and Wastewater Committee.
Yes, Chairman, the Water Committee, Matt, on September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four recommends the following, awarding the Austinville Sewer Improvement Phase Two contract Jones Road and Bridge in the amount of one million nineteen thousand one hundred five dollars.
All right, coming from County, it doesn't require a second, is there any questions or discussion on the recommendation from the Water Committee? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Second item is authorize approval and execution of amendment memorandum of understanding with the MRPDC for a twenty thousand grant for Pepper's Ferry, Whistler, Pines and Route Fifty-two Water Improvement PBR.
Right, again, it doesn't require a second, is there any discussion on that recommendation? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Third item, accepting Thresher Engineering proposal for the Jackson Elementary Sanitary Sewer Grinder Station in Forest Main and amended appropriate amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand for preliminary engineering preparation of funding application, obtaining permits and completion plans and specifications for shovel-ready project.
All right, again, it doesn't need a second, is there any discussion or comments on that recommendation? All right, Mr. Terry will start with you.
Aye.
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 So approved.
And the last item is the board review, the engineering and staff recommendations for revisions to the Dunford Road Water Project Secretary.
All right, again, we don't need a second, is there any discussion or questions on that recommendation?
Uh, yeah, do you all, the, the recommendations are on the map here, the committee reviewed them, um, but we have Mr., Borts here with Pete and Borts and, and Don and Will from our water department. If there are, are any questions or if y'all want to go over that, if you want them to go over that, uh, from the water committee to, to briefly review, um, what's recommended here, but, uh, page one sixty-eight of your agenda, um, shows the, uh, the, the plans with the six-inch water mains. It shows the green dots that, uh, show the people that want county water, the black for some of the ones that were not interested in county water and, and note that this is not everybody in the area, you'll, you'll see the other little squares or rectangles in there that are houses. This is just people that responded eighteen months ago to a, uh, a survey of, of water wants and needs out there. Uh, and you'll see that the little red circled areas are, are shared wells we're looking to, to, to get rid of. Um, the plan there on one sixty-eight also shows an eight-inch service line coming up from, uh, Austinville Road along Olive Branch and a, uh, a pump station, uh, to be located near there. The cost, uh, the, all the bids that, that have been coming in have been way over budget and, and, and anticipated to be over budget. On one sixty-nine is, uh, some revisions to the Dunford Loop, uh, in the process and upsizing to an eight-inch water main. And I'll highlight those and Scott Borts, do not be afraid to jump in at any time and correct me here, but I'll start on the north of the page, where ninety-four, where Dunford Road comes down to Blair Road, you will see we have removed that section of line down through there. It's a tight right-of-way down through there and there are no houses down through there, so we have looked at removing that section of line. Uh, uh, south of there, and I'll, um, I'll, I'll, I'll treat this like a clock, but where Grandview Drive is, and you see the little black and, and green circles there, from there, which I will call three PM on a analog clock, running down to where you see it says four-inch line, we have removed that section of the Dunford Loop as well. Um, the, the loop would be connected by what comes up Olive Lane and then what runs over to Grandview Drive to, to serve the people in that area. Uh, there's a couple houses down there that are not served, but they didn't indicate they want water, but once again, a tight right-of-way and not a lot of houses been served in that area. So looked at taking those out and then also taking out this Olive Branch, eight-inch line and pump station, uh, coming up. And, um, that basically, uh, we think brings us back closer to what we expect the anticipated budget to be on that. The next couple of maps show the original fire flow with six-inch water mains. Um, most of those are in the four fifty, the four eighty or four ninety or whatever in the process. Um, the next map shows the available fire flow, uh, with the loop removed, but upsized to an eight-inch water mains. Uh, and the staff recommendation to the committee was to upsize to the eight-inch water mains to give greater capacity in the future and also provide the greater fire flow.
And, and I appreciate the, the fire flow map, um, because, uh, looking, looking at the, the map, and I, I know we talk about citizens that, that, you know, want the county water and, and some that don't, but, um, that area and, and Mr. Chris, I'll ask you, I, I assume that area right now doesn't have any fire hydrants.
That's sort of.
And that's a. On ninety-four, and that's a pretty, you were talking about the right-of-way, that's a pretty tight community get through with a, with a fire truck. So I appreciate the, the fire flow because that's, it's, it's not a easy neighborhood subdivision, whatever you want to call it, to, to navigate in a regular vehicle, much less a, a pump and truck. So I, I think, I appreciate you putting that and you talk about the fire flow, four hundred fifty, five hundred gallons a minute, when you're talking about filling up a two thousand gallon tanker, and I know Gus is sitting back there and it doesn't take a real long time to squirt out two thousand gallons of water when you're fighting the fire, so that's, uh, I appreciate you providing that, that information.
And Mr. Borts, going to the eight-inch, the changes we're making, I don't, was it about a million dollars?
About a million dollars, we're checking, yeah, and a lot of, yeah. There's some apples to apples there where prices go up from our projections, which I think I had about eighty bucks to put in there for eight-inch and sixty for six. Even though the prices go up, differential will still keep it around that many dollars for the fair saving on this one. Full of that where no one's been asking for it, the ideal move was get, get loops for fire flow, we really like to have the loops and even moving water, keeping pressure there. Trying to get those loops as much as we could, uh, like Stephen said, on the north and on that three-six, Davens at the south on Olive Branch. But the, the cost right now, we're just saying they're outrageous, so anything we can do to save money now would be ideal. The, the move on this job is actually already said they will let bid stages, we're gonna bid this one out, uh, to get as much service to everybody as possible and then they'll allow a second bid, so somebody coming back in and saying, no, I really want water down on Dunford in the south or, or push it up further, we'll have the ability to have that deal with that second, second bid. This should work out well for everybody, maximize everything initially.
The yellow lines are pre-existing, they're, they're the ones, lines that are already there, right? Like down Austinville Road?
Correct, on the, on the, on the first few slides, correct.
Yeah, I know. All right, team, what? What, what was, what was, I don't remember what the reason was for the pump station on Austinville Road that were taken out, what was?
That's, that's a great question, so initially the purpose of that pump station was, you've got some high, uh, high houses on Austinville Road, I don't know the name of, there's three or four of them. Uh, and so the goal was if you, we got rid of the old piny pump station, basically moved it back down Austinville Road, uh, towards Ricky Road, you can bring that whole area up to a higher pressure, pressures of, by leaving, uh, piny in place, we're gonna do a little work with that one, it'll, it'll cost a lot less money to go and get, get pump stations, water lines are going, going really hot, pump stations are going sky high. So by saving that pump station, uh, until later, we'll open that up. Yeah, it would have brought up that Austinville, that ridge on six nineteen, we brought it up to a big serving level and a little bit of pressure.
So piny, piny pump station will, will take care of it for us for now.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, what, we've talked with the Water Committee about it, we, we have a bids that came in on our, uh, Route Fifty-two sewer. Um, they close to a million dollars over budget as the amount was, but one of the things that came out of bid was the pump station estimate on it was around eight hundred thousand dollars and they came in at one point seven million dollars, is that about right? Or about somewhere in that range, so pump station costs are, we think ridiculously high and so that's, this is the information shared committee and the committee, I think, agreed with this recommendation to do this, but we just wanted everyone to have a chance to see this is what we were proceeding with and that was the recommendation to go for.
Yeah, and one of the, one of the options that we talked about on the pump stations, once we seen the cost that, that Sharon, uh, or, uh, Mr. Byrne and Mr. Chris shared with us, was, uh, possibly getting a prefab building that was already get, ready to go as a pump station. Uh, that we, if we had to move it, we could potentially move it to somewhere else and relocate it, uh, so we was gonna look at those options as well.
My other question, I thought, uh, the, the project originally, from what I understood, was gonna be ninety-four all the way to Ivanhoe and is it still gonna be one whole project or is this gonna be a separate project?
This is phase one, when he was talking about, we were about to agree for us to build this as two projects. This is phase one to get water to these new customers as quickly as possible and in phase two is the Route Ninety-four line replacement, which if we needed to add any of this work back in for the other lines, we would add that back in to it, but yes.
Can you fix the pipe along Ninety-four right now that's not, so that we don't lose so much water? I mean, is, 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 cost-wise with the lo, water that we're losing, is it, is it smarter to do this than to do the other first? I thought we were gonna try to get Ninety-four fixed so we didn't lose all that water and then do this, I mean, I'm just curious as to.
Well, thanks, but, but what we were trying to accomplish was try to bid this initial project, see what, because we, we had to stretch those dollars, we're running that deep line from Ivanhoe all the way to, to Route Fifty-two.
Right.
We're probably not gonna be able to accomplish that, which would get some miraculous bids, so we wanted to kind of bid this area, which was kind of a priority. To serve as many customers as we can, see how many dollars we have left over, and prioritize the areas along that.
Okay, I was just, I didn't know whether with all the leaks and stuff you had in Ninety-four, if we have enough water to service this area, because I was under the impression Ninety-four is leaking a lot. Okay. All right, does anybody else have any questions or discussion for the motion from, uh, or recommendation from Water Committee? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
And that is all the Water Committee had.
All right, we'll move on to Economic Development Committee.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the Economic Development Committee met September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four and makes the following recommendations. Authorizing the county administrator to execute any documents necessary to coordinate in conjunction with the JIDA, the Virginia Business Ready Site Program and Go Virginia for the Lot Ten Developmental Project.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Uh, next item, setting a public hearing for the Enterprise Zone Amendments on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
All right, is any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved. All right.
That's all, Mr. Chairman, from Economic Development, sir.
All right, we'll move on to board member time, Mr. Terry, since you've got the microphone, go ahead.
Keep it up. All right, so, uh, if y'all remember a couple months back, I brought up a, a concern about potential illegals and, and homeless people becoming a problem. Well, it's now become a problem, um, I'm gonna share my experiences with you folks from the past couple weeks and give you my feelings on it. If you're sensitive, you're probably not gonna like this very much, but it is what it is. These problems started and it's gonna continue to get worse with a little project called Open Door Cafe, handout facility for devised and built and supported by the Democratic Liberals of this town. So about two and a half, three weeks ago, my wife and I come home from being out to find somebody bent up on our back deck and in our yard, in our house. So we cleaned up after people who's throwing trash and cups and a lot of other stuff through there. Last night about ten o'clock, put the dog out to get to the bathroom before we went to bed, the dog starts making a whole lot of noise and a whole lot of barking. Cut the light on to find a gentleman at our backyard taking a crap. I'm telling you, folks, watch the, this new project that's taking place in Wiffle, it's called, uh, Monroe North, it's specifically for homeless. They call it unhoused, anybody wants some project development information, reach out, I'll be more than glad to provide it to you. But as long as I'm an elected official, I will not stand for this crap, I'm gonna watch town meetings and anybody that votes to support, to allow this to come in, I'm gonna reach out with, and let these people know, gonna get the address of whatever official votes to support it, they can go live with him. That's where I stand on it, if I has any questions, come see me, I'm off the soapbox, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Terry, Mr. Morgan?
Uh, the only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, the Glee Road Bridge construction has started.
Well, I should let you win first. Like after Citizens Time, that's. That's a shocker.
Yeah, I, I would buy there over the weekend, last weekend, and, uh, they've got equipment out there, they've got their temporary. Yeah, I I went by there over the weekend, last weekend, and uh, they've got equipment out there, they've got their temporary um, bridge for the crane to set over the creek and they're getting started.
Wow.
That's all I have.
Another thing, I didn't know, I didn't see. All right, damn, this true shit. Smith.
I've only got one thing, Mr. Chairman, if everybody would keep the Patton family in your thoughts and prayers. If you don't know, there was a tragic loss of a child um from the Patton family yesterday, so uh, please keep that family in your thoughts and prayers.
All right, Mr. Cook. I have nothing, Ms. Lawson.
Have nothing.
Mr. Burnett.
The only thing I've got is that the Burns Springs Community Center, I mean, Burns Springs Ruining Club still is looking for a community center.
All right, uh, Mr. Burnett, I've just, I had one question and when I was reading our our finance report, they um, I noticed we're up to two hundred and eight thousand dollars in the the opioid funds. And um, I'd like to s- see us have some discussions here in the fall about what we're gonna do with that. I I don't um, you know, the the opioid crisis um hit with county justice as hard as it hit any county in Southwestern Virginia. And there's a reason that we were awarded that money and I don't want it to lay stacked. Um, you know, we've we've talked about um, in the past, we talked about, you know, a day reporting um, a day reporting program like other counties have for, you know, non-violent people instead of going to regional jail where we pay two million dollars a year to house them. You know, in the spring, we can have them out here picking up trash off the side of the road. Um, you know, I know Mr. Jones does Recovery Corps. Um, we started a program with the school system um with a with a drug education counselor. And lo and behold, they got their own grant, so they didn't need our money, which is is great. But um, I guess my point is, I I don't want that to to lay in there and just build and build and build. We we need to use that and put that money back in the community in in some capacity. And that, I mean, that's my opinion, I don't want everybody else to.
Okay.
I mean, we we talk about our reserves that, you know, we have for economic development and and different things. That's great, but this line item, we we don't need to sit on it. No, and and there's, there's multiple roles of what we can use it for, but I guess my point is, let's let's use it.
You and I are thinking a lot, Ms. Ms. Woods and Ms. Collins and I have been working on the school report.
And that doesn't happen very often, I'm I'm sorry, I didn't mean it in real.
No, we we were working on the school report this week where we had to uh send them what's been spent on that that grant and stuff so far. But that my my conversation with Ms. Woods this afternoon was um, I I want to set up an expenditure account with the opioid expenditures and ask her to sort of the chart of accounts, you have to put it in the right code words in the process, I said, but we need to set up a an account that we're doing that and so we can start putting projects in there to fund because it's, you you're right, it's only certain things you could do this and I don't wanna get it co-mingled in with other funds, it makes it difficult to track. So if we can set it up as, you know, whatever number account and then get you all voting, you know, for whatever it is, you know. And I'll make up simple things, but if we gotta spend ten thousand dollars to update Narcan everywhere or something, we put that in that code item. Uh, you know, one of the things I was wondering was, not full drug court, but what could we do with some enforcement type action or using some other things? So uh, we, that's that's what we're trying to work on, we'll uh, we'll get some information together.
And and Mr. Hankins, I I seen on the news this morning that um, and I know we're new in the EMS world, but I don't know if you've seen the article about Bedford County have updated their um, basically their lock boxes for their scheduled drugs for EMS. Um, I don't know if that's, which I know that we've already purchased that. I don't know if that's something that we could use the money because it was um, that was the target of what Bedford County done was so that the drugs can't disappear or be misused or, you know, whatever on the EMS side, so.
Yeah, we we spent about fifteen thousand dollars for the med safes for each one of the trucks. So um, if if we could count that, you know, certainly a qualifying expense, I think.
All right, well, thank you, that's all I've got. Does anybody else have anything? Mr. Barry, you have anything to come before the board?
No, sir.
Mr. Hankins?
In the interest of keeping it good news, uh, no, sir. Um, I I would point out, it it just has come out in the last fifteen minutes or so, the uh, the Hattasi Energy Arena signs are are up on the building. The uh, the hockey team posted that uh while we were meeting.
Ms. Collins, you have anything? Mr. Farthing?
Yes, sir.
All right, here and nothing to come before the board, we'll be adjourned.